And we will be live in five, four, three, two, one.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your patience. We apologize for being a few minutes late. I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next regular Board of Education meeting is on Tuesday, May 25th at 7:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room. Thank you. Just a couple of quick comments. A thank you. Last night, the RTM passed the Board of Education budget. A thank you to the full RTM for continuing to support and invest in the great education that Darien provides to our students. Thank you to RTM F&amp;B, Jack Davis, RTM Education Clara Sartori, and Board of Finance John Zagrodzki, and for moderating last night Seth Mording on the full RTM. And here at Central Office and also the local leadership at all the elementary schools for the hard work that's done on organizing and putting together a budget. And thank you to all my colleagues on the Board for all the tough questions and good conversations around continuing to invest in and deliver one of the best educational experiences, not just in the state but in the country. So, thank you to all those involved. I was earlier at a concert at Darien High School, and I have to say, it was awesome to be up there at a concert. By now, we would have been at two or three concerts, according to Mrs. Thompson, but in the courtyard, there was a concert, Bring Your Own Chair, Bring Your Own Mask, and it was just beautiful to see all the people in the courtyard up there. All the new mulch. Thank you, Mr. Lynch. The courtyard looked great. And to listen to those students sing outside in the courtyard and then see kind of full feels and a full campus. So, we're making incredible headway as we continue to fight through COVID. Also, we didn't meet last week, but I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you. Last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. I saw some decorations and great events going on throughout the school. So, a big thank you from the Board. We do appreciate our teachers and all the hard work that the PTOs did to celebrate. Thank you very much, especially over the course of this year. Everything that we've been through, we so appreciate all that you do every day in and out with our students. So, thank you very much. With that, I will turn it over, Michelle, to public comment.
Good evening. If you would like to speak during public comment, please click the Participants icon on the bottom of your Zoom screen. Next, click the Raised Hand option. You will notice a blue hand icon appear in the upper corner of your screen where your face, name, and/or number appears. When it is your turn to speak, the facilitator will identify you and announce that you are unmuted for public comment. Once recognized and unmuted, please state your name and address. You will have up to three minutes to comment. There are no raised hands at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. Moving on to the Superintendent's Report, Dr. Adley.
Yes, good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us remotely. Again, just as the Board Chair said, I would be remiss if I didn't also pass on my words of appreciation to our RTM and extended community members for the support of this year's budget. Again, it's a reflection of the community's commitment to providing the highest possible quality education to all of our students. So, again, thank you for that support. Again, another shout out to the staff. We are deservedly proud of their efforts as they were recognized last week. I appreciate all the Board's goodies and also for goodwill wishes to the staff. Tomorrow is another big day, though. Tomorrow is National School Nurses Day. And nobody has worked harder this year than our dedicated frontline workers. And certainly, nobody deserves more praise than they do. So, I want to give a shout out to all our Florence Nightingales. Florence Nightingale during the Creme de Moi also really provided the conditions, improvement of conditions for soldiers. She also was a great statistician. Those are two things that our nurses are doing that they bless you. Just in time for a nursing comment.
Mrs. Stein needs a nurse.
In the words of Florence Nightingale, "For the sick, it is important to have the best." And we do have the very best in our nursing staff. So, congratulations. Details of the Rescue Act Fund, our grant is quickly now rolling out. Where we slowed it a little bit. Originally, we were looking at 964. It looks like we're just over $1,250,000 at this particular point. So, it's just over $1 million will be our allocation, 1025185. Thank you to our staff and our students. In some cases, suffering through some of the assessments in this particular year. We will use those assessments in the best possible way for our kids and for to improve the school system. But SBAC, NGS, SAP, they're all ongoing. And just while some celebrations happen and so on and so forth, some of our kids' responsibilities are increasing right now. And we wasted them all well, and thank the teachers for their support. As the Chairman said, it was good to see some of the live events. We've also had an outdoor performance last week of the orchestra and the events that the Chairman mentioned this evening. It's just nice to see those taking place. Thank you also to our building administrators. It's that we've got like a matrix of all these events that are happening at the end of the year, especially since we have added in car parades and permissions for those and so on and so forth. So, that's a new tradition that will last. And many of these events are outside. So, things have been changing and changing pretty quickly and rapidly. And we appreciate all our administration's efforts to make these events special for our students and also special and available to our community members. I just want to take a moment, if you don't mind, over the past week or two. There was a couple of middle school and high school students who were recognized for some, and staff actually for STEM achievements. In the Space Settlement Design Competition, this is for the first time ever, we had three students, Danielle Diage, William Laird, and Connor Blenke. They competed in the 2021 East Coast Regional Space Settlement Design Competition with 40 other school systems from across the East Coast. And they were designing habitat for humans to live outside of Earth. I want to congratulate three of the students for their efforts and dedication and commitment to this and their success. Will was recognized for his outstanding leadership. And actually, with the award comes an invitation to participate in International Space Settlement Design Competition, free of charge in Florida during July. So, congratulations to him. Our Technology Student Association Regional Conference. The club competed in this annual regional conference. It was virtual this year. And these are a couple of the placements that we had. We had nine students competing in different competitions. In the Computerated Design Engineering, first place, Owen Miller. Tech Bowl Oral, Toby Coles, Owen Miller, and John Kasechen. Coding, second place, Owen Miller and John Kasechen. Extemporaneous Speech, second place, Brenton Engole. Tech Bowl Written, Toby Coles. And Cyber Security, third place, Owen Miller. We also had three of our teachers, and the courses were profiled at the Connecticut Educators Computer Association Get Together Tech Expo, so to speak. And they were Tamara Burton's newly developed Global Innovator's Course at the Middle Schools. Mr. Reynolds and Lorraine Westervelt's Computer Science Family Style Project. They were actually profiled there. So, congratulations to our students and staff and their recognition in the area of STEM. Vaccinations Clinics for students 12 and above went down today. And I'll let Alicia talk to her a little bit about that. For the most part, we, after tomorrow's, we anticipate the formal announcement tomorrow and that the vaccine should be widely available at the locations that we have secured. The administrative interview process is well underway. And the middle school and assistant principals are now coming to the Board. So, two of the processes will be winding down. Technology Plan, the presentation of the Technology Plan, the completion of it is on course. And very pleased with how that has come together. And the gifted program, again, is also on schedule to be presented to the Board, the evaluation of the program. And if you haven't seen it, if you're up at Ox Ridge, it's coming alive. The steel is grown out of the ground. It's exciting to see that. And you can now begin to see the building take shape a little bit. Tomorrow evening, thank you to the Board for your availability at 5:30. And we have a facilities meeting on Thursday morning at 8:30. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Adley. Moving on to approval of minutes. It is requested the Board approve the following. Minutes of the special meeting and executive session held on April 27th, 2021. Minutes of the regular meeting held on April 27th, 2021. And minutes of the special meeting held on April 29th, 2021. May have a motion, Mr. Maroni, seconded by Mrs. Stein. All those in favor, that is unanimous. Thank you. Moving on, Board Committee Reports. Dr. Adley mentioned steel is up on Ox Ridge. The next Ox Ridge Building Committee meeting is this Thursday at 10 o'clock. And the committee is also organizing. I know I reached out to a lot of people on dates for a celebration slash groundbreaking event that we'll get some more information out to shortly to celebrate kind of the continued success of that project. So, thank you. Presentations and discussions, moving on to Dr. Adley and status update on the schools.
Well, I don't need to tell Board members, certainly as citizens yourselves and as parents yourselves, it is absolutely encouraging to see the trajectory and the positive steps that were taken and the positive trends that we're seeing. We haven't had a positive case, I think, from April 28th. So, I'm sure you do not miss the phone calls and the notifications. I'm sure the parents do not also. But that is very encouraging to see. And if I can get this thing to move. And the pattern sort of reflects that not too long ago, that was all red. These were significantly higher numbers in Connecticut and Fairfield. And even in our district, we have none for April 30th, May 6th. So, you can see that that's tremendous. And in response to that, we've made some with the input from our Director of Public Health and our Medical Advisor. We've made some transitions, particularly as we have these outside events and so on. So, we've tried to expand some opportunities there in response to that. We certainly don't do that in a cavalier way. We try to do that in a thoughtful way. I can understand people not having feelings, there's consistency in some of the messages because it's a fast-moving process as we do this. But it's just encouraging to see these numbers or lack of numbers, for want of a better term. So, the student vaccination clinics, Alicia, I think, is online here. But with the Department of Public Health in Darien, working closely with New Canaan and down at Lord &amp; Taylor's, and also going to be available in Walgreens. It's going to be, it would take us longer. We don't have as much of an opportunity to provide it here in Darien for refrigeration purposes and so on. And it would take us longer to actually set it up. We have a number of these venues that will have vaccines, and our parents can access these quickly. They'll send more details out probably Thursday morning. Once with this release tomorrow, we'll get more links out to more locations where people can be vaccinated, and they'll be able to do that very quickly. So, that's encouraging to be able to expand that to our 12-year-olds enough, which is, you know, the majority of people at the middle school. Quarantine, as you know, we did reduce the quarantine down to the 10 days. So, that if it happens again, right, if we continue to have cases or they flare up again during the break or otherwise, at this point, the Department of Public Health is still requiring quarantining at this point for next year. I'll speak a wee bit more about that. Remote learners has sort of like, it's sort of come up a little bit more. But that's really, if I go to my remote learning slide where they are, and I just can't see the end of that, if you could tell. Oh, it's next slide. I'm sorry. Thank you right there. So, these are, represent true remote learners. And also, maybe, I mean, honestly, there are some decisions that are being made for, down the stretch, for athletics and so on, which is, which is okay. That's, that's the way it's, their parents are able to do that. But for the most part, this is the true number of remote learners that we have at this particular point. I just spoke about the end-of-year ceremonies, celebrations, spectators. I don't think I'll go on about that. We've expanded those, we're opening those, we'll continue to look at with a passive lens where we can do that. I do want to talk about, if you don't mind, if I pause there for a moment, I want to talk about the 2021-22 school year and the American Rescue Act Grant. So, if I can pause there, Mr. Chairman, maybe if there's any questions before that.
So, on the top topics, from COVID case metrics to year-end ceremonies, any Board questions or comments? Mr. Seeny?
Some questions came over the weekend about certain award ceremonies that have happened in the past at the high school, some scholarship ceremonies. I guess maybe if you could address where the decision-making process is coming. I mean, one of the things we're trying to do is reward all students and get them back to normals as possible. And if we can't do it as a district, is there any way we could, you know, recruit, you know, the many volunteers we have in this town to pull these off? The question, is it a staffing issue or is it a health issue? Is it an organization issue?
Well, I think I know what you're talking about, but do you want to be explicit? Just in terms of like, there's different expectations or events? Is that what we're talking about?
I just clarified, because the seniors did just receive.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just pulled out a document that sort of outlines everything coming up from IPid collections. Capping out, the senior scholarship is going to be in. They're going to do it on the stadium field.
Katie, we can't hear.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. They are allowing, a memo went out.
Yes, it did.
To senior families today.
Okay, thank you.
That outlines everything. I'll forward it to Duke so the Board can see it. But a lot of those questions were addressed and.
Thank you. It's a good, it was a good picture, I thought, when I saw it right before I came. And it kind of addresses all the issues that kind of came up over the weekend.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I think the high school's done.
Nothing virtual or nothing Zoom. We're getting people together to celebrate.
Okay, thank you.
I think they've done a great job in trying to put that together.
Appreciate it.
Networked.
Thanks for the question. Good. Any other questions? Mrs. Parent?
Thank you. I may be jumping the gun a little bit. Maybe you're going to cover this. About vaccinations. So, now that 12-plus is available, has there been any discussion at the state level about, I've been fielding these questions for the past, you know, seven to 10 days. Will the state require vaccinations for students to come back in September? Is that something this conversation has started, or is this, we're not even there yet?
Well, the Governor rolled out the announcement about vaccinations and being exempt from a religious reason, so that kicked that in. But they have not, they have not made, there's no decision regarding you're going to have to be vaccinated to come back to school.
Is that something that would happen at the state level, or will that be district by district?
That's an open discussion at this point, Chair. There's room for discussion. Or I would think that that would have to, personally, I would think that would have to be a state thing. But not, but maybe not. There is, they are having a discussion about that, but they haven't made a decision about that. It's not a requirement.
Alicia. Can I jump in?
You can.
So, right now, because the vaccine is under an emergency use authorization, I don't believe that they are able to make it a mandatory vaccine because it's not even fully FDA-approved yet. And all those decisions traditionally about vaccine requirements for school entry comes from the American, or no, I'm sorry, the Association or the American Committee on Immunization Practices, ACIP, through, which is part of the CDC. So, I think that it would have to be kind of a vaccine that is mandated as required for school entry there initially. And then it would be up to each individual state to adopt it. So, I don't, I don't foresee that for the fall. I could be very wrong, but I, I don't foresee that being an entry requirement for school in the fall. And I, to answer your question, that's the best, that's what I know right now.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Thank you, Alicia. Mrs. Ritchie?
Just to add, I know some of the private schools are requiring vaccinations for the fall. So, I don't know if that's the start of the trend, but it's just information that's useful for us to have at the board table.
Thank you, Mrs. Ritchie. Any other further questions or comments about those couple of topics? So, we can move on. All right, 2021-2022 school year and the American Rescue Act Grant.
Just, Alicia, I don't know if you heard the updates that I gave about the other things, or anything you want to add or otherwise?
So, vaccines. We sent a message out today with information for the New Canaan Clinic, which I understand now is full. I also received some emails through Yale New Haven, from people in the district who were able to sign their children up through Yale New Haven Hospital. So, I'll get those links out to everybody. But I just received, right before this meeting, an email from Community Health Center, and they have registration available now for Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday of next week for first doses. So, I have that email ready to go whenever I get the go-ahead to send that out to families. So, there's a, there's a lot of vaccine availability. Also, Greves is going to be having Pfizer vaccine in their pharmacy and Walgreens as well. They said they would share a link with us on Thursday. And they'll have clinics for students in the after-school hours and on the weekends, too. So, I think that people who want the vaccine will be able to find it fairly easily locally.
Thank you, Alicia, and thanks for your ongoing 24-by-7 support. Much appreciated.
You're welcome.
Add, but Alicia said that Greves, I believe Greves is having 12 and over for Saturday. I believe it's a Saturday, but.
Mrs. Parent?
I was just going to say that, too. It's Sunday as well.
All right, good, good. So, Alicia, when you can get that out through your approval process, that would be great. Thank you.
I sure will.
Okay, okay, sorry. Thank you. So, just comment on the 2021-22 school year. These two items right now are sort of tied at the hip, even more so after yesterday and today. These two, the opening of school and the American Rescue Grant funding. So, the 21-22, and talking to Alicia and our other health professionals, the lens I've been looking at in a thoughtful way, and again, not a cavalier way, but I'd be looking at opening as close to normal as we can for next year. And if I have to dial it back, we better dial it back a wee bit. That's kind of, the lens I would take in terms of as normal a situation as we possibly can. And if I have to sort of like take precautions or otherwise, or told to do things as late in the process or otherwise, then I would do those. At this point, it looks like masking and some level of distancing it would be required. When we talk to our health professionals, they are also given where we are at the moment in our community, given the number of kids who are being vaccinated, our staff is vaccinated, given the pattern we're seeing. They are also of the same disposition of trying to be creative and responsibly open things up. So, that's the lens that I'm taking for planning for next year. And certainly, I'm happy to entertain questions as to what, how does that leave us in a certain situation if we've got questions. But as of today, or late yesterday, the American Rescue Act Grant funding is sort of being tied now to reopening. So, we just heard that we have to develop or revise our plan accordingly. I'd like to say that we're just, three words, we're open. But revise our plan by June 27th. That's what we're just told literally yesterday, this morning. There is no template to do that. So, there's no, there's no real categories or template to actually provide that update that they're requiring. So, the monies that I spoke of, about just, just over $1 million, $1,250,000, was new. That was new information also yesterday. And they'll continue to work with us and give us the guidance along the way how to do that. But essentially, we'll have a plan to do for June 27th. It'll have to be revised and updated every six months. This is absolutely like ludicrous, to be honest with you. Given where we are, right, and given the place we're in. I don't mean that, that we don't plan for a safe and appropriate opening. That's not ludicrous. But, but what they're asking us to do, to me, is given where we are in our time and place. So, I'll talk about the American Rescue Act Grant Fund at the moment. Literally, it's just sort of like started to speed up like in the last two days. Let's come minimal direction. So, when I put this together, what I wanted to do was look at these categories on the left-hand side. I basically had them here, but I'm just trying, this is one slide the Board doesn't have. So, I'll just, I just put this in today. So, these are simply, when I put this together last week, it's deliberately vague, but because at that point, the monies we're getting were not particularly clear. I just wanted to make sure that we had certain ideas and to give the Board a sense of the types of things that we would be thinking about. It's not exclusive, exhaustive, or complete. And in fact, the Board may have good ideas, too, right, in terms of have you considered this or that or the other? So, these are some things that in consultation with the Cabinet and consultation with the staff, right, the ministry team, the principals of the buildings, these are things that are possible consideration for the, for the use of the fund. So, deliberately not delimitated in detail because I just wanted to roll something out to give you a sense, like, where might this be going? It's just what happened to start it to speed up like the last two days. But this is kind of just an idea. So, you've got a school psychologist, which we've reviewed at the high school since March. There have been significantly more referrals and more needs of kids at the high school. The literacy interventionist, that would be, they would act in the same capacity as potentially as the SRBI staff that we have at the moment. Essentially, instead of having one and a half at each building, and we're going to have two at each building, that just sort of runs out of two at each building. Essentially, it would be more of a push-in model of, of assistance potentially in the classroom with students in small group situations with staff. The contract tracing stands for itself because we're probably going to have to do that. The furniture storage, we have furniture storage now. Mike has the big containers around the district, and we may have to empty them quickly, or they may have to continue to keep the materials and desks and so on that we have in there for a wee bit longer. So, one way or the other, we're going to have to, they need them for some period of time. The technology access. So, we would like to continue to increase our access to technology and our points of service around the district. And it just continues, there are just so many needs around technology in terms of access points and so on, that we'll be continue to use it for that particular purpose, recovery services. And so, this is, there's been an ongoing discussion here, and we have revisited that. Mrs. Pliner, myself and the Cabinet have revisited that. And this is a potential use of the funds that, for some of PPTs that we have seen coming in since, since actually March, April. This may be a useful tool to use and be used under this particular category. The Campus Monitor. So, the Campus Monitor, we would be the additional Campus Monitor at the middle school. Having witnessed some of the safety precautions that are going on and how it's being used. It's a particular, they have less coverage for that particular building. We did put it in for COVID, and they've helped with transportation and a bit outside to help all over the place. They've also helped with social distancing, trying to help keep the kids reminded in the building about where to walk and how to work. So, I would consider keeping that in for the year. Extra curricular activities or intermurals. This is one specific topic that is actually recommended under this particular grant, and that we can expand opportunities for kids. Now, if you're telling me, what are all, I don't have all the answers. I've spoken to the administration to gain some sense of these things that you would like. We're going to have to continue to work at that. So, the fine details of these need to be worked out. We would say that we would like to potentially include the social, emotional and aspect of Ruler and bring that to the high, to the high school and the middle school level, since we have. So, basically, I'm using, instead of using these funds for plexiglass masks and all of the other precautions, I'm trying to use it for the use of our students. Now, staffing, the way the staffing would work, if the Board approved any staffing grant. Now, you do approve staff and grants in Title I and also IDA grants. We do have staff there that, that's not untypical of any district. If you do a staff member in a grant, when the grant expires, or whether it's just, let's say, a staff member for one or two years of the grant, that's it. It would have to come back through the budget process. The Board has total control of that. It would have to come back and advocate through next year's budget, right, if you wanted one of those. I will say that the school psychologist, right? So, Board likes me to flag things, right? This is one potential one that will be considered for next year anyway, right? If you're saying, why was it for this year? We didn't need it for this year, but we were contemplating getting through the year. Would we, and we would analyze that with potential for the following year. That's a potential for that. That's all it is at the moment. That's a potential for that. That's all it is at the moment, but now for the, uh, we're asking for the need to the kids that, that. Right now that we have enough to be coming back for next year, um, given the need that we're, we're seeing. Um, we fully expected that to be the same need when they come back next year. So anyway, the, the staffing, board has full, full control over the staff and. Anytime there is a staff member coming to the board anyway, whether it's in the grant or whether it's not in the grant. Um, but, but, but inevitably, if any of the staffing that were hired, it would have to show up in the budget again. So that gives you a sense of the types of things that the cabinet are thinking of. And we will have to continue to work on that. I deliberately didn't uh, put a comprehensive thing together, because it's not finished. And, but I just want to give people a sense, and then. You might be saying like, well, what, what happens if you don't, if you run out of these masks, or you need more plexiglass or something like that? We have. A lot of supplies in place, but if there's other stuff that we needed for some particular reason, I'll have to come back to this. I, I've, I've come back and say that we, we would need something. So, wha- what remains is to be determined is just the spacing, right? Inverb, I would like to go back to regular, regular sized classrooms, but if, if it's required for spacing, I may need to modify this a little bit.
The um. The only thing that pops into my head, and maybe it's, it's an unknown going into the new year is cleaning under building safety and healthy schools. You're satisfied with the current cleaning?
So the cleaning, uh, we will be backing off uh, in June, I think it's June, um. The actual cleaning at the weekend, we will not be doing that anymore, um, and we won't build that into the model for next year either, uh, because. It is now, I don't know, proven, um, but certainly the Connecticut Department of Public Health are saying you don't need to do that as much anymore.
Thank you. Okay.
I'll test you.
Good, Mrs. Parent?
Thank you. So it's my understanding this is a three-year grant.
Correct.
Have you, it's, this seems like a lot for year one. Are you planning to spend most of it? Is your, is your idea to spend most of it year one and then have a little bit left for two and three? Or what, what's the strategy that you're thinking about using these, these funds?
So, um, right now, I'm looking at, certainly if it's, if it's literacy interventionist. If it's school psychology, they're, they're all have to be, most of these things have to be upfront for next year, because the kids are coming back. Um, social emotional learning, all, all of, most of those topics will be right up to the first year. The only thing I've done, uh, potentially would do would maybe potentially play out. Um, maybe the school psychologists for, for the first two years. The rest of them are just perhaps uh, year one type scenarios. And maybe, maybe it comes up in the again the budget, or maybe it doesn't.
Mrs. Ackman?
I have a few questions.
Sure.
Thought you answered most, but now have some more. Um, literacy interventionists are specific in what they do, right? So last meeting we heard, we thought kids were on pace, we were certainly watching them, but they were testing. What has presented the specific need um, for us to think we need to hire literacy interventionists next year? Rather than an SRBI specialist per se?
Um, let me say that, that, that the care is a difference, right? And we're not talking about a coach here, right? That's not a. Euphemism for a coach or anything, and we're talking about the, yes, they're really, like, we have called it literacy intervention, but it really isn't SRBI, the completion of the SRBI. Do you want to talk just about why, why we really haven't changed positions? It's just different.
No, I'll say some of, some of the things that worked this year is our interventionists were able to go in. And work with students through loose groups and provide some of that, not only supporting teachers with tier one instruction, but supporting general instruction. Now that we know, or we're much more optimistic that we have some of those flexibilities to do more with students and, and groups next year. Uh, the thought is that they would actually continue that practice and be able to work with. Uh, strategy groups and full students, because they haven't had that time to do that this year. So one path to explore is helping students develop those specific skills related to. Uh, social emotional learning, which range from things like planning an organization to building stamina as readers and writers. Um, some of the other pieces are, have, working on phonemic awareness, especially with kindergarten students and. Implementing some, some new programs to support that. It would be able to do that in real time with students instead of. Uh, that just being on the teacher. So it's, it's definitely interventionist working with students, coaches work with teachers. So the design of this is uh, people working with students within the classroom.
Can I just follow up and then we can go to some other questions? So, do you think the need for these interventionists, and thank you, I appreciate the differentiation between coaches, I think that's important? Um. Is something that you've seen a need for as coming into the district and now experiencing the curriculum? Or do you think their, their need is specific to COVID? And that's not, I'm not worried about placement, I'm just trying to understand, does the district need these or due to COVID, does the district?
I certainly, when you have opportunities for this type of support for students, it's wonderful always. Um, I would say especially right now, given that students haven't had a chance to experience workshop instruction like they have in the past. This is a great opportunity to put that on um, hyperdrive, so to speak. So I know I'm being somewhat ambiguous. I would love for it to continue forever. Uh, but I understand that pragmatically, this is, this is a, a good approach to address. Our goal of focusing on grade level standards next year through what we're calling acceleration. And yes, we are very happy with where students have performed, but coming into a new year and. And having longer time to have these instructional blocks, stamina is definitely going to be. An area where we're going to want to support students, especially our youngest readers and writers.
So I would just ask them, as this rolls out, if maybe we can get a little less ambiguous, so that we understand if we're putting this in a grant. And it may be something that we're seeing in the future, we understand the role, and is this kind of a short-term band-aid to make sure everyone is where they're in? And maybe that's the wrong phrase, I don't mean to be glib about it. Or is this really something the district needs, and we're seeing this as a new learning model that kids could benefit from? And they both might be useful. I would just like to understand what our model is with this. So, don't eat it tonight, but as this comes back.
Yes, I think that, that's great, and I'll say the short, the shorter term component of it is. Having that extra adult to address SEL through actual instruction, and not saying, let's press pause, it's time for SEL right now. This is an opportunity for a teacher in a content area to be working on the specific things. Like self-regulation, like organization with, while students are working on reading and writing.
So the literacy interventionist will have a significant SEL role?
They'll have a, a responsibility, like all teachers do, no matter what their content area expertise is. Is to really integrate those skills into the instruction within the content. Absolutely.
Mrs. Parent?
So this, to me, sounds similar to the school psychologist in that it's something that the schools would really benefit from. And is this something that you're flagging that this? It, it, with my educator hat on, if I have an extra set of hands in the classroom, that's awesome, right? I mean, it's, I don't want to have to then pull that out in the years to come. Is it, do you see this as a need? Further past next year, I guess?
It's, it's way too soon to tell.
Please say no. That's the answer.
It's too soon to tell, but right now, the, the design of this is something that will benefit students in real time, and we can. As we're, because we're really working on anticipating what students are going to need as they return to. A more regular school setting and a regular school day. And some of the things we know we can anticipate are the social emotional learning, learning needs of kids, and this is a way to combine. Uh, what we know, literacy is obviously the gateway to accessing all other content areas. If we're focusing this on literacy and embedding SEL at the same time, it's a, it's a promising path.
Mrs. Richard?
Um, so. Mid, the way you described it, it sounds like it's, it's, we're not, children are going to need more than just one year of intervention, so. I mean, just my view that it's not going to be a one year, year thing. Um, can we go, I know that you're saying that these are just preliminary numbers, but based on the financial information that you sent around. It seems like we're rapidly utilizing most of the grant at this point. Um, so I'm hoping we can get a little more clarification on, um. First of all, I'm a little concerned about the, the percentage that we're allocating to recovery services, because it needs to be twenty percent. So, according to the, my calculation, based on the increased grant dollar amount, we. If we're just looking at recovery services, as you detailed up on that spreadsheet. We wouldn't, we wouldn't be making the twenty percent, so perhaps you can point me to other things that we would be doing that would be qualified as recovery services.
I, I would just, I would just say, Ms. Richie, that when we come back with, when we come back with the list, twenty percent of it will be recovery services. I mean, I, I don't mean like to be divided, but. Yes.
So I, I'm asking that because I would like to know what, what is that, what is, what are those services that you're looking to put in there?
For the recovery services?
Dollar amount that you gave us for recovery services, you're saying that number will just go up? Or are there other, other categories?
I think what Mrs. Richie Tom Dennis, I asked for financials and we were told a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
So the twenty percent for learning loss, not necessarily recovery services. Uh, so literacy interventionists would qualify as recovery uh, services, so would uh, obviously recovery services.
Okay, well, that's, that's all I was asking, was like, what other item would qualify as recovery services? That's all I was asking.
Thank you. Mrs. Stein?
Um. I think Mrs. Ackman tried to frame her question in terms of the literacy interventionist, is it COVID-related? Or is it sort of something we need? Let's say it is part, partly COVID-related. My question is, we're focused on reading and writing, what about the math? So, in terms of recovery services, are we seeing at the elementary level a need for math as well, not just reading and writing?
We're not at the moment, and as far as the benchmark assessments, which we've been using to frame our conversations. We're not experiencing a, a loss as far as students are behind. But the way that I would articulate that this is definitely COVID-related as it's being presented. Is, this is a way to address SEL. In the actual process of addressing the content at the same time. And if we, if we aren't making sure our students are as sharp as possible. With their skill of literacy, they're not going to be able to access math, because as you know, the way math programs work now, they're very literacy driven. So that's why the focus is there.
Thank you.
And the caseloads, the actual caseloads of our literacy interventionists, because they also provide our EL services are much higher than our math interventionists.
Mr. Seeny?
So, this is awesome, and addresses the number of the items that we, around this table have been focused on these last few months. So it's good to see that we can address them through a grant. But are, is the grant rules or the criteria, the grant forcing us into columns that we might not follow? And is there anything else that we might be? You know, forcing dollars to be spent, and maybe not as many in another, or you feel pretty comfortable with how everything's outlined?
I, I feel fairly comfortable. I would say that we did, in, in all honesty, we did not take those columns. And develop some of those ideas, we took the ideas, and we've only, literally only received these columns. Uh, we sort of knew that probably twenty percent at some point was going to be for. Uh, everything that's in that title, that first column, right, and recovery services, so we, we kind of had, knew that. Uh, but we didn't have an idea of the, for the most part, all the, all the rest of definitions. We, we knew that, that, that school safety and stuff would be in there as well, but I guess it had a general, but we weren't given the specific columns or specific headings until. These past two days.
Thank you. Mr. Maroni?
Yeah, going back to the psychologist, you mentioned that there's more referrals and there, there's, would be, maybe a need for that. Is that an immediate need, or is that a, you know, we, we, last week, you saw, last meeting, you spoke about COVID fatigue and. And are we seeing that, that we may, I realize there's only a few weeks left at school, but if we need to hire psychologists. I for one, I'm happy to do that for a short term for, for students who are suffering from COVID fatigue.
I don't know if it'd be COVID, but you can turn, turn the shirt, I wouldn't know if I would call that COVID fatigue, but if you want to just describe the need, Shirley, go ahead.
Is it on now?
Yes.
Oh, yes, thanks for the question, Mr. Maroni. Um, yes, it is increased. In the high school, we have, uh, this year, right, about eighty referrals. An average year is about fifty referrals, an average year, not even met, two thousand nineteen, and that. So there is a higher incidence of referrals. We do have all hands on deck, we have other psychologists helping out right now, so we are doing that in present time. We also know that our number of remote learners has really increased. In September, we were looking at about eighty students in remote learning, the most recent is about a hundred and seventy-nine. We've got a delta of ninety-nine students, and I know it's intermittent, there may be, you know, of. Co-er students coming back for the next couple of weeks, but we do know that we'll have referrals possibly in that area. Need to address it with school clinical support, and especially coming back next year.
Mrs. Ackman?
Um, staying on the psychologist, Dr. Abby, you said something that the, the psychologist. I think you said regardless of the grant maybe planned for next year. Can you talk a little bit more about what you meant about that?
Uh, so, so. The high school, uh, the high school administration is contemplating, looking at the viability, a need for. A school psychologist for next year's uh, budget. It wasn't put in for this year.
Okay, I thought you meant for start this week.
No, no.
That's all I needed.
No, for next year's budget.
So I would say the high school, um, this is not a new request. So it's been bantered kind of about and never quite made it to the board table, so I think the board would be very open to hearing about it. It would mean speak for my colleagues, but certainly our psychologists work hard on very complicated cases, so. Um, you know, grant or no grant, it sounds like this might be a conversation we'll be seeing, is what I'm hearing you say.
Yes, I think, I think you will.
Okay. I have another one too, but.
Let me give Mrs. McCammon and move it around a little.
Um, I'm curious, Shirley, um, specifically on the school psychologist. If, um, what, or maybe Chris too, any, are we seeing any differences in the need for intervention? That have to do, not just with COVID and being out of school, but because kids are accessing technology in a different way, they're accessing different learning pathways. Or do we think that there's any sort of, or maybe they are, do we think that there's any change in identification rates? Or um, anything like that that might be driven by using different modalities uh, in this current year?
I don't know that there's an answer, um, because I'd have to relook at the, the difference in types of referrals. I think a lot is about social emotional needs. I think a lot of it is about increased levels of anxiety, of depression, of isolation. Imagine our students in all levels, K through twelve, who had an entirely different experience of social engagement. Whether in the classroom or outside the classroom, we've, it's impossible. So all those developmental stages that would occur during those authentic opportunities have been frozen. So I think that's what we're seeing. We're seeing that isolation and that emotional support, that's me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Ackman?
So, the hotly debated item during the budget are COVID expenses, as they were laid out for our first um, forty-five days. I don't see any of those here, although I do see furniture storage, contact tracing, which would imply some level of social distancing, as you mentioned. So are we to assume that those things that you identified have changed now that the world has changed? Or may you still be coming back at some point with like a nursing stipend, an additional teacher if necessary?
So, a lot has, clearly even from our last discussion, a lot has changed. Nothing has changed from the Connecticut Department of Public Health, because they're so far behind, I said respectfully, they're so far behind. The trends of different towns and so on, so forth, that now we have seen towns taking over what they want to do, or what they think they should do. And also our, our health professionals are, are leaning in that general positive direction as well. So you'll. They co, I have no COVID in here, not deliberately, we have, we have available supplies of the things that we know what we're going to need, these masks. Uh, we have uh, dividers and so on, uh, for, for teachers, they can be used to, we, we can get rid of the ones that. There's some that, there's, I've seen that better days, and I will get rid of those and we'll replace them. I, I don't have at the moment any other budget for any other COVID-related matters. Now, what would come up? Potentially, if State Department says, look, listen, you really need to do a better job with. Uh, the numbers in the classrooms or spacing or in that, okay, I, that would have to be replaced, either there's something in here. Or come back to the, come back to the board for a COVID-related matter and consider it like that. Um, I'm looking at the lens of opening up in a regular scenario. People are, are essentially vaccinated, you've got, you've got the mask, you've got the dividers. We should be able, we should be able to come back in a normal situation, um, but.
There's so many.
We've had a critter. We've had some critters.
So, so, so the answer is, uh, I'm talking, no, I don't have anything in. I have a bit and piece of you spoke to, right, and we know we're probably going to have to do contact tracing. I actually left that as a very important part. I'm not anticipating, so I, I'm, this is important, so I, I apologize for the oversight. I'm not anticipating offering remote learning next year. So I just put that on the table, and that's not, and that's not something that I'm going to consider putting on the table. I don't think that that was the best for kids. Um, I don't think it was the best uh, for, for teachers. Now, I will not say that there's no remote learning, because the conundrum that I need. Now, I will not say that there's no remote learning, because the conundrum that I need to resolve is if, if we're still doing contact tracing and kids are out, I'm not going to say we're not going to do remote learning, right? We'll have to find a way to do that. Uh, so I've been reluctant to say that, uh, because I don't want to have to wind it back. But until we get a solution to that.
So, so, and I know you said this list is incomplete, right? And it's just for sure, and you're working through it. But some of these things that we saw may still either come up in this grant or at some point, given our budget, either through us managing our budget differently or an appropriation. And, and we would just have to deal with that at the time.
Yes, I think that's a fair assessment.
Thank you, Mrs. Ottman.
Well, he, he sort of answered my question as he was talking, because I was going to speak to you. I just, I, I have a son in private school and they have already announced that they will probably be, still be quarantining students at this point, because they don't anticipate all of them to be vaccinated. And they will be offering a remote option to those who are quarantined. So I think, you know, that I wasn't sure where, what your position was, if you had thought that through yet.
So I don't want to say that, um, just yet. And then the powers that be, uh, say that, well, you don't have to quarantine the people around you at night. Now you don't have to go home yourself or something, or they take a different position than that. Although now that we had this meeting yesterday regarding the, uh, the rescue act, and they have to, you have to have your plan in, um, by, you know, twenty-seventh of June or so. So, so there's a wee bit more laughter. We'll have to expedite that a little bit, but, um, I'm not, I, I don't really want to say that just, just yet in, in case that's not actually necessary.
Thank you.
Is there a timeline for this grant? Like, do we need to apply and have it kind of locked in by some point versus, you know, we open the end of August? I think it's August thirtieth, so help me that. But is there a timeline for applying for this grant and having the grant written?
Yeah, they just, they just rolled that out.
So we're going to have to apply by early June, looks like June seventh. Um, so we do have to apply and list all the funds. So we can't just apply for, let's say, seven hundred thousand and leave three hundred thousand kind of like hanging up there. Um, it does sound like we'll, we have the opportunity to revise it after six months. So if, uh, we put a plan together for a million dollars and maybe some things change and we want to alter and we haven't actually expended any of the dollars, it looks like you'll have a chance to revise it to long-term.
So the implication of that being we're going to have to plan and write this right in June, well before we actually know for certain what August might look like in contact tracing.
Yeah.
So it's possible that we may end up with expenses in August that we couldn't contemplate in June or we didn't know we needed in June.
That's correct. That's why I'm trying to say to the, to the board this evening, I'm looking at this as a lens of opening as normal as possible with your understanding that, like, if we change the other way, we got to come back and maybe we does it a couple of issues.
Good. Any other further, further board questions or comments? So great questions and a lot of good discussion. It means, it sounds like the, you know, the administration doing all the right stuff. I would, you know, I would say that the, the graph and the information will become more detailed over the next couple of weeks. And, um, we look forward to hearing more about that and understanding what, what else you need to support this going forward and any changes to the, uh, American Recovery Act grant also.
Yeah, so certainly, uh, at the next board meeting, we'll bring back, uh, uh, you know, our revised version. If, if any board members have, uh, any questions or comments or otherwise, please send them my way with this. That'll be helpful.
I think a lot of the questions are about what the needs are for the students. And I know that you're kind of learning that every day from what I hear. Some of the stuff you're planning is almost like a test or a beta type thing to get ahead of it and have the right resources in the fall for these students. So we look forward to continuing to hear more information about that. But thank you very much. Okay, moving along. We go from COVID to Spain. A presentation and discussion in possible action on proposed trip to Spain for Darien High School. It's actually nice to hear about stuff like this moving forward. So I'll turn it over to, uh, Dr. Adley, Mr. Tranberg, and Ms. Maurizio.
I have to say that I'm, I'm tremendously excited to see this on the agenda, the agenda tonight.
This is, I've been acting for six years.
Um, this is, uh, this is, this is, this is right in line with our mission, vision, and values, what we're trying to do. Um, Christina is, is, is the department chair, uh, and along with our colleagues, have done a tremendous job. Not even, there's actually, this, this is sort of like double edged this, uh, because you're getting a proposal tonight. We're going to get a proposal maybe at the next meeting, um, as a, a different version of this. I just, I'm just thrilled that in the middle of, of what we're doing, that we're, we're able to tap into, uh, the teachers going to actually yard for these experiences. Because anyway, I'll stop talking and introduce Christina, uh, Maurizio, who is the department chair for, uh, languages. And Christina, thank you, um, for being here this evening. Thank you for your preparation you've done thus far. And, um, the floor is yours to give a wee update to the board. And actually, we'll, we will be seeking approval, not necessarily tonight, that's up to the board. Um, but ultimately, we have to get approval from the board. So Christina, the floor is yours, thank you.
Hi, everyone, thank you. I'm going to be sharing my screen, so just give me one second. There we go. Okay. My AirPod just came out. Okay, there we go. Okay, uh, can everyone hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Great, thank you. Okay. Uh, thank you, everyone. Good evening, members of the Board of Education.
You're just, Christina, I don't know if you can hear this, but you're just blowing up a little bit. Uh, we can't hear you actually, frozen.
Mr. Tranberg and my, and I'm Chair Navasquez Mauricio, and I am Chair of World Languages for Grade Six through Twelve for the Darien Public Schools. Thank you very much for welcoming me to your meeting this eve, the Global Education and International Travel Program at Darien High School. Our goal is to inaugurate this program with a language immersion trip called Experience Spain. And we hope this initiative is the start of a new tradition in our district. Tonight I will give a brief, hold on, I'm getting texts. You're breaking up big time. Hold on, I'm going to move. Give me one second. It's my angels texting me, hold on one second.
You sound good now.
Might it be better to dial in over the regular phone, Chris? And you might have to move the slide along.
Just the spot in her house.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
How about now, is that better?
We'll let you know if it's not.
Okay.
Don't move.
Thank you.
Just text me. Okay.
You're good, go ahead.
Okay. Well done, there we go. Okay. Perfect. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to start over for good measure. Okay. Um, good evening, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Adley, Mr. Tranberg, and members of our community. My name is Christina Vasquez Mauricio, and I'm Chair of World Languages for Grade Six through Twelve for the Darien Public Schools. Thank you very much for welcoming me to your meeting this evening. And I'm here to present something very exciting for our students and for our community, the Global Education and International Travel Program at Darien High School. Our goal is to inaugurate this program with a language immersion trip called Experience Spain. And we hope this initiative is the start of a new tradition in our district. Tonight I will give a brief overview of how we have developed our program with our students in mind. I will then share information about our partnership with Education First, also known as EF, and how we will keep our students safe while abroad. I will review our trip itineraries and highlights, information about accommodations and meals, and we'll share what is included in the price of the trip and then take your questions. I, along with some of my colleagues in the World Language Department, began to explore language immersion and student travel opportunities abroad in two thousand and eighteen. We briefly put our plans on hold when the pandemic began, but picked back up again this past December. An academically focused trip abroad, above all else, is something good and exciting to look forward to after so much was put on hold. It will give our students a chance to safely reconnect to a world that right now seems distant and remote and to practice the skills that they learn in our classrooms in an authentic context. In order to properly gauge community interest, in October of this school year, we conducted a survey of all freshmen, sophomores, and juniors in our world language program. We asked questions about possible destinations, purpose of travel, and travel dates. Spain, language immersion, and April break of two thousand and twenty-two were the most popular choices. We also held an informational meeting in December of this school year, where we shared our proposed trip to Spain and gave students and families an opportunity to register for the trip with an understanding that we would be seeking the Board of Education's approval to move forward. Planning a trip this far ahead has allowed us to monitor global health developments and also grants more accessibility to our families. Our families are able to spread payments for the trip out over a longer period of time and also gives us an opportunity to provide scholarships for students to attend the trip. While many of our students have already had the fortune to be able to travel abroad, our language immersion trip to Spain will provide students with an experiential learning opportunity that has an academic focus. They will be able to practice their language skills in an authentic context, which increases their self-confidence, self-awareness, and gives them a sense of independence. While on our trip, our students will also have the opportunity to conduct project-based research through our student travel partner. And having traveled abroad with my own students in the past, I can tell you that the greatest gift our students get from experiences like this is the global perspective that they return home with. They come back changed with a greater worldview. And suddenly, much of what they've been learning in class is applicable to the real world and finally makes sense. For our trip to Spain, we have partnered with Education First, the world leader in educational travel. Hundreds of thousands of students around the world have traveled with EF over their past fifty years. One of the greatest benefits EF gives us is dedicated on-location staff in every country, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. It is an accredited institution. You can actually graduate from an EF high school in another country. And the pink dots on this map represent all the school districts in our area that have partnered with EF in recent years. As I mentioned in my memo to you, before coming to Darien, I personally traveled with my own students on four separate occasions and partnered with EF on all of those trips. The safety of our students is our number one priority while abroad. EF's safety and security protocols are one of the main reasons we have partnered with them to help us plan our trip. And by traveling with them, EF provides us with the following. A dedicated personal tour director on location. This person is an EF employee that lives in the destination country and will travel with us twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. We will meet them the moment we land in Spain and we'll say goodbye to them at the airport when we're ready to come home. A safety and incident response team in the United States and in the destination country that will help us mitigate any unforeseen circumstances and help us get home safely if necessary. Safety and health precautions and procedures to ensure the safety and health of all students and adults while on our trip. One chaperone spot for every six travelers and enroll in the trip to ensure a safe travel ratio and support for our district's safety policies and procedures. EF's peace of mind and global travel protection program give our program at Darien the flexibility to change dates and destination of tours in uncertain times, following guidelines from the Department of State and the CDC. This will allow us to still travel, even if we have to change the destination of the, or the dates. Now, the fun part. Experience Spain. Our language immersion trip is an eleven-day excursion to some of Spain's crown jewels. Our trip will happen during spring recess of next school year, and we have worked with EF to ensure that our travelers and adults are missing the minimum number of school days possible. On day one, we will fly overnight to Spain and arrive in Malaga in the south. On days three and four, we will travel to Granada and spend two days there. And on days five and six, we'll be in Sevilla. I'm sorry, day five will be in Sevilla. On day six, we'll be in Córdoba, still in the south. And then on day seven and eight, we will be in Madrid. And finally, on days nine and ten, we'll be in Barcelona. And on day eleven, we will travel home. And now here are some of the highlights of our excursion. It was hard to fit them all into one slide. Um, the thing that I'm most excited about is experiencing Spain in Spanish. Um, this is what our students love the most. It's a little bit of a culture shock when they first arrive, because they're hearing Spanish all around them. They're hearing, um, depending on the region of Spain that we visit, they're hearing different versions of Spanish, different pronunciations. But they're able to do many of the things that are listed on here in Spanish, which include expert-led tours in each location, a visit to the Alhambra, a traditional tea ceremony in Granada, a visit to Plaza de España, monuments of Sevilla, and a flamenco lesson, tour of La Mesquita de Córdoba, a private guided visit of Museo del Prado, lunch in La Plaza Mayor, and a tapas cooking class in Madrid, and a walking tour of Las Ramblas and Parkwell, and a visit to La Sagrada Familia in Barcelona. But there are so many more things on our itinerary, these are just a few. All of our hotel accommodations are centrally located in the cities and locations we will be visiting and in safe areas. They all meet EF's very high standards for safety, quality, and cleanliness. Each hotel is at least three stars and each room has an en suite bathroom and free Wi-Fi for guests. Because EF has local, in-person staff in each destination country, they are able to inspect hotel properties regularly to ensure that they continue to meet these safety standards season after season. Our meals on tour are designed to give our students an authentic and immersive culinary experience. Basically, we will eat exactly how the locals eat. The price of the trip also includes all breakfasts and dinners. And while we do encourage students to partake in local cuisine, we will of course accommodate any dietary restrictions and individual dietary needs. And last but certainly not least, here is a breakdown of everything that is included in the cost of the trip and what is not. What is included is round-trip airfare and transportation while on tour between destinations in Spain, all hotel accommodations, our twenty-four-seven tour director that will be with us on our trip, all educational programming, which includes guided tours, activities, and, and excursions while in Spain, daily breakfast and dinner, our EF traveler support team, both in Spain and back here in the United States, a project-based learning program to help with research projects, a customizable tour donation page, and an uncommon app college essay toolkit. Uh, before I go on, I'd like to say something about the project-based learning program to help with research projects. Um, EF actually allows students to, um, join a website that allows them to make a project that they can eventually earn college credit for. And they do some prep work before they leave, they do some research while they're there, and then they finish their project when they come home. And what's not included is travel to the airport, passport, visa, and baggage fees, spending money, lunches and snacks, tips, college credit through EF, which I just talked about, upon completion of a research project, and the global travel protection plan for a fee, which can be added before the tour. And that's it.
Thank you, Christina. Thank you so much for, um, not letting this die through a challenging year and behind the scenes continuing to, uh, work on it and bring it to life. It's very exciting. Um, I know the trip to China was always a very exciting trip. And I think years ago, there were other trips taken. So I think it's a great opportunity in high school to have programs like that. So thank you for the time and energy, you and the team. I'll open it up for board questions or comments. Mrs. Stein.
Um, hi, Christina. I remember your first parent coffee when you were new to the district and enthusiasm you had about expanding our cultural and language immersion opportunities. So I hope this is the beginning of many more opportunities to come. Um, just a few questions. So can you talk about, um, is this open to ninth through twelfth graders? How many students is ideal and what the selection process will be? I imagine you're going to have a lot of people interested, given the year of no travel and not a lot of experiences for these kids. So can you just talk a little bit about that?
Of course. So when we. Of course. So when we conducted our original survey, we sent that information to current freshmen. Sophomores and juniors because they will be next year's sophomores, juniors, and seniors. And the students that we reached out to and their families were students that were, that are currently registered. In our world language program. Uh, we currently have a cap of eighty students that we can travel with. And to date, um, since our December information meeting, to date, we have sixty-two students that are currently registered for a trip. The trip is currently open to students that are in our world language program. But because there was so much interest in Spain and we eventually decided to plan a trip to Spain. The students that are currently registered to go are students of Spanish. There will be other opportunities, which I will be presenting later. For students that are not in the world language program, but right now because of the nature of the trip. Um, it is intended for students that are studying Spanish.
So incoming ninth graders, current eighth graders, they will not be able to participate? Or are you gonna open it to them if they're in Spanish now and will be taking Spanish next year?
Um, so part of the reason why the trip is currently not open to current eighth graders, who will be freshmen next year. Is because we felt as a department that we wanted to get to know the students. Before we travel with them. And while I'm sure that's possible to do in a few short months. Uh, we also wanted to see students make a commitment to studying Spanish as a language. Which typically happens after the second year in planning ahead to the third. So while I don't want to say that the trip will never be open to current eighth graders in the planning year who will eventually become freshmen. Uh, we feel most comfortable in designing it this way for our inaugural trip. Just so we can have students that we know and are committed to studying the language.
Great, thank you.
Mrs. Ritchie.
Hi Christina, thank you so much for this presentation. I just, as a side note, I told Bridget about it. And she was really mad because she would have loved to go on this trip. But it sounds wonderful. It's so exciting. It's really amazing. Um, my question is if you, I'm looking at the forms that you filled out and it says that you anticipate six. Um, teaching administrative staff with chaperone, but with this, the teacher-to-student ratio of one to six. And eighty students, that would require significantly more than six chaperones. So could you just explain how you fill in the rest of those chaperones?
So when I completed the, uh, permission slip, there were not as many students signed up for the trip. Um, so now the, with the current ratio of sixty-two, that means we would need approximately ten chaperones. And we will take as many chaperones as is appropriate to have a safe ratio on the trip. And with the trip capped at eighty, it's possible that we will need even more.
Right. Eleven, I think. Um, okay, so you just, you think you would be able to find enough DHS staff? To be able to participate in as chaperones?
Yes, and part of the reason why I haven't personally reached out to anyone. Is because I wanted you all to hear this from me before moving forward. And to approve it before I recruit any of my colleagues at DHS. Although the rumor is out through the grapevine because the kids talk. I have received a lot of interest. So I, I haven't officially recruited anyone yet. But there is a growing list of interest amongst my colleagues at DHS.
Sure.
And some at Central Office, too.
Mrs. McCammon.
Um, I have a fairly practical question. Um. I'm so excited for the students who have this opportunity, but I just want to make sure that they get enough to eat. Um, that they're, um, that breakfast and dinner are included. And, you know, given what I know of Spain, breakfast is a cookie and a, and a coffee and dinner is at ten o'clock. To make sure both that they have enough, that it's structured to, it's to eat appropriately, and how do they pay for lunches during the day?
And being Spanish myself, I can tell you that you're right about your assessment of Spanish meals. Um, having traveled with my own students to Spain before, our rule of thumb has always been to budget for ten to fifteen dollars a day to eat for lunch. And that can, because we're going to be centrally located, that can mean a variety of things. That can mean we as a group are going to buy box lunches from this restaurant that's down the street. And everyone can agree on what their meal is going to be and we're going to pay X number of dollars per person. Or it can mean that we are going to this one destination. And in between museum visits and excursions, we have an hour of free time. And there is a market that you can visit and eat lunch at with obviously a chaperone and a group of friends. So you can decide to spend your daily budget as you would like to. Uh, but that's something that we tell our travelers to plan for. You know, once they're actually getting ready to go on tour, we tell them, you know, this is the incidental amount of money that you need. And this is what it's going to be used for. And that's the guidance that we give them for lunches. And a note about dinnertime. So we on tour will try to keep as close to. Um, I don't want to call it an American schedule, but as close to a schedule that our students can be accustomed to. They also get extremely, extremely tired while on these, on these trips. So they are going to want to eat and go to sleep, um, as soon as possible. So we will not be eating dinner at ten or eleven o'clock at night. Or at midnight, we're going to be eating, um, a lot earlier than that. And they will definitely get enough to eat.
Thank you. Mrs. Parent.
Thank you. Hi Christina, this sounds amazing. And I'm, I'm excited about, about this and what's, what's to come. And you teased us a little bit and I can't wait to hear what's, what's coming next. Um, it's a question about scholarships for, that for families that may not be able to afford this. Um, is there a cap on scholarship money if there are more than, you know, X number? Is anybody who wants to take this trip available to them?
I don't have a definitive answer to that question at the moment. Um, if there is a student that really wants to go, just like with anything that happens at DHS. Or any of our schools, we're very fortunate to live in such a great community that will support these initiatives. Um, we are currently looking into the possibility of an, a scholarship application process. What exactly that is going to look like. Uh, there is also an, an actual EF scholarship program that students can apply through EF. To attend on scholarship directly through our trip. Uh, but we also may be able to provide those scholarships to our students as well. As far as individual numbers. I can't tell you how many scholarships we can give out. The only number that I do have is that there is a cap on eighty travelers and we currently have sixty-two to go. Um, I have been speaking with our travel manager. She's our student. Our, our school liaison that works with us at EF. And she has told us that we could probably count on two to three scholarship spots that we can reserve for students to go on the trip. And right now there's room for that.
Great, thank you.
Mrs. Ritchie.
Um, so I went online just to look at the reviews for EF and for the most part, they're great. Except for the refund policy. And I think most of it has to do with COVID. So I'm just wondering if, if that's something you've explored with. Um, it's, it's an expensive trip. And if people are starting to have to put down money relatively soon. I was wondering if, what, what kind of refund policy there is in place.
Yes. So we currently are in what's called a no-risk, uh, time period. And part of the reason why we're in that no-risk period is because I have shared with EF. That seeking your approval to proceed with plans for this trip is extremely important to me and to my colleagues. And so the people that have already registered for the trip know that this is happening. If for whatever reason, our trip were not approved, everyone would get all of their money back. Um, we have also, there's also a, um, a cancellation policy through EF. That each individual traveler will have access to once they register for the trip. But you're correct in saying that parents are upset with EF because of what they were not able to do during COVID.
Thank you.
But they were actually able to refund most of it.
Thank you. Mrs. Akman.
So Christina, thank you and congratulations for, um, getting this off the ground. I know this has been a passion here. Mrs. Stein said, we've been so excited. And, um, first, or another thank you for doing exactly what we asked you to do to bring us a trip that's fully flushed out. That is planned that we can follow. You, you, your presentation is excellent and really hit all the marks that the board usually ask questions about. And I really appreciate that. Um, the only thing I want to make sure and with our numbers, it, or clarify, with our numbers, it may not be an issue. EF sometimes groups different schools together and they do tours together. Is this, will this be a distinct Darien High School tour? Will this be with another high school? And I'm not sure that it matters other than everyone knows who they're traveling.
Yes, one hundred percent. So we have actually already hit the number to have this trip be exclusively for Darien High School.
Okay.
And the only students that will be on the bus are students from Darien High School.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Ritchie.
Sorry. Um, so I just was reviewing the policy. Thank you for including that. And, um, I would love to approve this tonight. I, I know it's on as possible action. But I know that we need to get the superintendent to sign off on first. So I'm just wondering if Dr. Radley has signed off on this.
So the line for Dr. Radley was said, Dr. Radley, Dr. Radley was, uh, just making sure nothing presumptuous. And, and the implementation of this policy that I'm standing on behalf of the board. I would be happy to sign this. I've reviewed it and, um, reviewed the program, reviewed the plans a couple of times with Christina. I'm, I'm absolutely thrilled, uh, for the opportunity before. So yes, I, I will sign that momentarily if we need to do that. Happy to do that.
Good.
Thank you.
May I, uh, the board ready to take action on this this evening?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good. I'd like to propose a motion to accept the Global Education International Travel Program for the Spain trip. At the Darien High School for the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two year. Um, as presented, um, by Christina. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Akman, second, Mr. Seeny, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Again, Christina, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Applause all around.
So Christina, come back at the next meeting.
Great.
Because for the follow-up of this is, well, I'll have her, it's a completely different, but it's just a complimentary. And you couldn't ask for an apartment to tie things together nicely the way you, so stay, stay tuned, but you'll be back at the next meeting.
We look, we look forward to you back at the next meeting.
Thank you Christina. I look forward to coming back.
Can we go?
Thank you Christina for a, a well-done presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate it. Thank you.
And have a good evening.
You too. Thanks.
All right. From Spain to renovations we go. Uh, presentation and discussion of Ed specs for the proposed renovation plans for Henley Homes and Royal School. And I just want to thank again Dr. Radley, uh, Mr. Lynch, Mr. Rudel, uh, Mrs. Klein, Mrs. Thion, Mr. Trenberg. I know a lot of people are involved in, in writing and organizing these Ed specs. Um, a lot of work was done, tremendous amount of work was done around Ox Ridge. It's getting Deb all choked up. Um, but, and it's always good to have a template, um, that we went through. So I think a lot of that helped with the great, um, organization and stuff that was done around Ox Ridge. So I think this is a, a project that's really supported, not just by the district and the board, but by the town. And we're excited to move forward to the next piece of it, which are the, the Ed specs. Dr. Radley.
Thank you. So, uh, before you are the Ed specs for Royal Homes and the Henley Elementary Schools. Again, I would reiterate with the board chair said, thank you to my colleagues, um, for their, uh, input into this process. And, uh, the thoughtfulness, uh, we did try and model it a little bit after Ox Ridge. Uh, so that was, that was the start of it, but fundamentally, a lot of it, it formatted, it looks like it, but fundamentally. Most of this had to change, right? Uh, so again, uh, before you are the three, I'm not going to go through them all. At the next meeting, uh, I would anticipate and look for, hopefully, uh, that we, that we approve them. And also approve going to the Board of Selectment, uh, to establish a building committee. You see that the format of the format describes, describes, uh, the district, the school, the history. Mr. Lynch is a walking encyclopedia for the history and I appreciate that very much.
Wikipedia.
And then it goes through that, what, what's included in some of them and not included in the other. We sort of touched on the things that would be sort of touched in the, in the project. That doesn't mean to say, as you know, whenever the building committee gets involved, they, they change something. But it has to be in line with the specs. So we've tried to sort of, that, that's the big umbrella for this. That why is something in something and not another one? Well, if we don't envisage those areas being touched in the other school or otherwise. So that's kind of, uh, that's kind of the, the design of it. Other than that, um, uh, as, as you work your way through this, we'll be happy to answer questions as we go. I'm sure you'll spot something along the way. I'm happy to answer any questions at this point.
So as you know, I think we, everyone's been part of this process and Dennis and the Facilities Committee have moved this along. Um, and I think the presentations that we've had have given us a good idea. Um, and envision of where we're going with this. The building committee will have a lot on its plate once it's formed. And again, as we get through the Ox Ridge process, um, you know, no real changes to the Ed specs happen unless it comes back to the Board of Education for conversation. So, um, with that, I'll open it up to some questions. Mrs. Parent.
Thank you. And, um, you know, and I'm looking at these, they seem very similar to Ox Ridge as I would expect them to be. Um, is there anything that you learned or the building committee learned through that process that is reflected in here? Or is it basically, is it basically the same as Ox Ridge? Or is there any high-level differences?
So I should have, I should have framed it as, that, um, what's very equitable here is the educational instructional experience. I mean, that's really, uh, with the changes that, that are recommended, that's through the design. We are maintaining the same educational instructional experience for kids. That was, that, that was, that was the mainland.
Thank you. Mrs. Ritchie.
Um, so I just noticed as, and maybe Mike can touch on this. Thank you, by the way, Mike and everyone else that was involved in this process. Really appreciate all the work that went into it. Um, I noticed that with Henley, there were two things different with Henley versus Royal and Homes. And that is, I didn't see an OTPT room. And I also noticed for the instrumental music room, it, it wasn't accommodating the, the forty students. Like it would in the other two schools. So can we just hear why there are those differences in Henley?
I'm gonna, it, it should have been the same for the music as the other schools. Uh, there should have been one regular music room and then two four-hundred-square-foot.
Let me clarify. So it's under the instrumental music room in Henley. It, it only, it's, the occupancy is for four to ten students for the daily, I guess, their lessons. At the other school, it also included up to forty students. So I'm guessing that's for when the full band comes together and practices. So I was wondering why in Henley, what is, is that a smaller room?
It should, it should be the same for, for, for the, so we will, we'll look at that.
Okay, so that might just be something in the verbiage that needs to be added to that.
I think the forty has to come out because.
Oh, so you would come out of homes.
Right, the instrumental music, they changed, there was an addendum made to the Ed spec. Um, for Ox Ridge. Um, after the work started.
Okay.
Because, and they went from, um, uh, like a nine-hundred-square-foot instrumental music room with the one-hundred-square-foot storage area. To two four-hundred-square-foot rooms because the instrumental at the elementary level was a smaller group.
Right.
Children. So if it, if it says forty for instrumental, that's, that's, that's an error that.
Okay.
We, we figured when there was large group of kids practicing like that, they would probably do it in the common room or on the stage.
Right, that's normal. And there is a, there is a page for a general music room as well. And that is a much larger room and. That's right.
So you'll update the instrumental music rooms?
Yeah.
That they coordinate each school.
And then just to why Henley does not have a separate OTPT room in their Ed specs?
They, they have a room that they're not, you know, if it was a room that was being changed. or added, like if you notice, there's no kindergarten rooms in there, but there are regular classrooms. The the uh the schematic that Northeast gave us didn't show a kindergarten changing. And and so they didn't show a new OTPT room at uh Henley. It's 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 a separate room right now down where the uh the DLC is, but it's not going to be altered in any way, so there was no reason to put it in.
Thank you. Mrs. Stein.
Um Mike, can you just clarify? I think it's on page around thirty to thirty-two in each of the Ed Specs. HVAC, we mentioned air central air conditioning. Are we planning on doing central air conditioning? Are we keeping the window units? I know it seems like we have the window units.
We we have window units at all three of these schools.
Yeah.
But the the plans that are in the capital budget, like the famously the Homes one, um it called for redoing them and when we read the the concept is to go with centralized air.
And it'll accommodate the whole building, not just.
That's correct. Be- because you're going to have these window units, when this all said and done, the window units are going to be about eight, nine years old. They're they're ready to go anyway. Um it would be better use of that electrical power.
Was the HVAC putting them in the buildings count, sort of counted in those sort of initial budget estimates for each building that we got?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Mrs. Ritchie.
Just to clarify that, so air conditioning, central air conditioning is part of the Ed Specs for these three buildings now at this point. It's there, it's part of these projects, it's not a separate project.
Yes, there was HVAC upgrades and it included that.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Akman.
No, I'm good.
You're good?
Yep.
You're good, AC good?
Yeah. Oh, actually I have one.
Yeah, sure.
You called on me. Um it is not a laborious amount of work, it was really helpful with um Ox Ridge is we had a summary page at the end of these. So when in question, we could just kind of flip back and forth. So unless this, someone's going to tell me this is going to take hours and hours to go through. If we could just have a summary page just for reference as we go through the project and go to the selectmen. It'll certainly help the chairman as he describes each of these projects.
Thank you. Good. So this will come back to us. Um you know, most people have looked through it based on the great questions. So we'll have another couple of weeks to look through it and come up with more questions. And based on the questions today, we'll tweak it a little.
Yeah, if anybody has anything, you know, in your leisure time that you noticed, um I'm sure there'll be one or two things along the way. You can certainly let us know. Have you keep your package just a lot?
Thank you all. Um moving along, um update and discussion on extended school year program, Mrs. Klein. Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Thank you, sir. Stay home.
Good evening to the members of the Board of Education and the school community. Thank you for the opportunity this evening to present an update on the two thousand twenty-one Extended Year School Program Planning. On behalf of Kristen O'Reilly, our Elementary Special Education Program Director and Extended School Year Administrator, Laura Straighton, ELP Program Director and On-Site ESY Administrator, Scotland Clarky, Secondary Special Education Program Director, and the indefatible efforts of the Elementary SUS facilitators and Secondary Special Education tier persons. We are here this evening in position for an exemplary two thousand twenty-one program planning for ESI. Thanks. Just to go over a view what we have each year, and there is a link to this site as well. This year our program eligible students, um as you can see, we've seen a significant increase in eligible students as a result of COVID nineteen impacted its half. Um we also have done thoughtful planning, we looked at student recovery services, and we've included those in our extended school year recommendations. And each of our student planning placement team during the time of the year has determined eligibility for our program services. We do consider the nature and severity of learning differences. We look at students who are likely in terms of critical skills that they may need to recover as well as recruitment. Thanks, Michelle. We also look at the areas of self-sufficiency and independence and also look at student behavior, knowing that there are behaviors that are interfering with students accessing the curriculum and how we need to continue to work on those during the extended school year programs. We also look at other circumstances and we look at IEPs, look at teams, at the ability of students to interact with typically developed students. We look at curriculum access and we also look at vocational needs and transition programs for many of our learners. The program information that we have is consistent with prior years. We'll have our K through twelve programs at Darien High School for ESY. Program will commence on June twenty-eighth through July thirtieth. Our students also may receive some services during the eight thirty, twelve thirty, uh Monday through Friday. Tokenique will continue to be our site for ELP and some of our DLC learners in grades K through two. We'll also have our commencing of services June twenty-eighth through July thirtieth. Those hours of operation are between eight AM and eleven forty-five AM, Monday through Thursday. That said, there may be additional PPT recommendations for ELP students. Um and that could extend through twelve thirty PM, Monday through Thursday. Many of our students attending the DLC program at Tokenique will receive their hours instruction between eight and twelve PM, and those are Monday through Friday. And in the planning timeline, uh we have been able during this year to stay in concert with that timeline. Uh Kristen amazingly began in September of two thousand twenty to begin the planning. We look between September and March, where most of our ESY PPTs were conducted and finalized. During February and March, we have our ESY program staff um secured. In April, we began communication with parent organizations, planning and and rolling out our program. In April, we began conversations for transportation for the program. And in May, as of this Friday, um again, because of Kristen's indefatible efforts, uh we will be mailing out by email our schedules to families on Friday of this week. Our ESY program staff also for any changes, our goal is to have that um by the twenty-first of this month. And we are looking forward to commencing our program on June twenty-eighth. The student enrollment, as you can see, has increased, I believe it's about a hundred thirty-one more students this year. Um our ELP has remained status, um it's really kind of flat to us here. And we also know that part of those program recommendations are really about recovery services in that additional cohort. Please keep in mind that often our recommended services are not our actual services. Many families let us know over the weeks ahead that they may not be accessing the program. Also, our staff, um which again, we've managed to procure, we're very grateful for. We have increased staff over this year. We're still continuing some um staff um seeking, uh but we are prepared to begin uh with our current staff. And lastly, in our staff breakdown, it is consistent with prior years also. If you look at the number of special education teachers, related service providers and our paraprofessionals to support all of our students pre-K through twelve um for this summer. And lastly, our thank you, I did want to just update the board. At our last board meeting, we spoke about a grant that we had um submitted to the Connecticut State Department and we did receive it. So it is official, which is not let us know when we actually have it, but we will have a twenty thousand dollar grant to support our ESI program.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Klein. Appreciate that and all the hard work and your team that goes into that. And um I like the last slide too, which actually breaks down the support staff associated with the program, so thank you. Uh Mrs. Parent.
Thank you, uh Mrs. Klein, for this presentation. I'm curious to know those extra hundred and thirty-one um or more than last year without getting too specific clearly. Is there general ideas, are those mainly elementary students at the K to twelve? Do you see, are there any trends that you're seeing in these new recommendations?
I'll break that down, I could follow up. But we did see the trend, as many of those students are not necessarily students that are having the same level of uh one-on-one services or related services. Many of those students are recovering, looking at some additional coursework and support. Um but we can look at it. I think you'll see more secondary students in that category than elementary students. Thank you.
Mrs. McCann.
Um to that end, I know you said you're still doing a little bit of hiring, but I see a delta of just about ten additional staff, whereas we have, you know, over a hundred additional kids. Um can you, is it because of the needs of the kids or do we just have that many more staff to hire?
Well, we're pretty much flat where we want to be in terms of being able to cover all of our programs. The difference was really, um it was, there were several more paraprofessionals that we hired for the summer. Again, last summer, we didn't have the same need because we weren't going into DSS classes. We weren't on site, so we saw an increase in paraprofessionals. Our ACTs actually are are pretty much the same. And again, there aren't as many small groups in terms of some of the recovery services, so we're able to cover those.
Because you're having basically larger groups.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Ritchie.
Um so you mentioned that some may not access even though they've been recommended. And I noticed that the figures that we have here on the chart are all recommended numbers. So maybe you could just touch on in a typical year, how many of those who are recommended actually wind up attending? And should we expect that to be consistent this year or maybe this year it'll be different?
Uh so um it it, we did compare recommended to recommended, so if you look at the bar graph, it does show that. Yes. I think I I want to say in some years, it may be as many as seventy or eighty students that decline it uh proportionally, but we do have more this year. Again, one should never guess, but I would anticipate that perhaps more students will be attending this year because of the nature of recovery, because of some recouping. So I think we'll probably have closer to what our recommended is, that would be my anticipation.
Mrs. Ritchie.
Um so you, on your chart, you're adding fourteen FTEs. And you did mention that there's a a grant that we did get, will that cover all the additional FTEs?
It'll cover many additional costs associated with the with the program.
And so what would be the total expected cost to the district?
I'd have to run that to see where we are once I know how many students are attending.
Okay.
Uh we certainly can do that.
That would be great, great, thank you.
Mrs. Akman.
Can it be be can it be generalized enough um that of the hundred and thirty-one additional students being added to the program, are those kids um on new five oh fours or IEPs? Or are those kids receiving recovery services throughout the year? Like, is there a split? I imagine we have new kids who have IEPs every single year, but I what I'm trying to say, have we identified more children? Or or these children who are identified that ESY in this particular setting is going to be useful?
So the hundred thirty-one students that we're representing here are all IEP of students. Um we will see an increase in identified students. In October of this year, when we did our CDAC report, we were about at eight hundred and four students district wide. When we do our next reporting, we do anticipate you'll see an increase in those numbers. We can give you an intermittent number.
Sure, whenever you get those.
We can certainly do, but we will see an increase.
Good, thank you. Mrs. Klein, I would just throw out there, if there's anything you need. Um you know, I think this is an incredible program and a lot of great work goes into it. But from a resource standpoint, please don't hesitate to come back to the board with what the needs are, especially if the numbers increase, that we do the right thing for our students as we always do going into the summer.
I certainly will, Mrs. Dine. I did want to take the opportunity to do one other shout out and to thank all the teachers and related service providers. This has been a difficult year for all of them. Um we know that many other districts are not having the same kind of attendance for teachers in the summer because they're just need some time to downtime and relief and being able to have some breaks from everything we do this year. So I did want to just acknowledge and thank all of our special education teachers and related service providers and some general education teachers um for their willingness and their enthusiasm to do our ESI program this summer.
It's a good point in terms of people wanting to take a break this summer. So our, we'll extend our thanks from the board also to all those people that are stepping on, thank you.
Thank you.
Good, any other further questions or comments around? Great. Um moving on, action items, personal items, appointments, resignations and retirements, uh Mrs. Stein.
As Dr. Adley said in his memo to you, two of the resignations are people who are on maternity leave who've decided not to return and one is a teacher who is relocating to another state.
Great, thank you. We move forward with the PAR, Mrs. Stein, second by Mrs. Akman, all in favor? That is unanimous, thank you. Uh Michelle, we will move over back to you on public comment.
If you would like to speak during public comment, please click the participants icon on the bottom of your Zoom screen. When it is your turn to speak, the facilitator will identify you and announce that you are unmuted for public comments. You will have up to three minutes to comment. There are no raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Thank you all, um a lot of material this evening. Thank you all, uh for those of you participating in Zoom land and listening. Uh we appreciate that, may I have a motion to adjourn? Uh Mrs. Akman, second by Mr. Brown, all in favor? That is unanimous, thank you everyone, have a good evening and a good week.
Thank you everybody.